Okay, so we're back from a short recess and we're gonna continue on with our special meeting, March 2nd, 2016. And we are now gonna talk about the FYI 2017 budget discussion. So... Does anyone wanna discuss anything on the budget?
May I just make a few comments first? Um, so what I left you tonight was some revised spreadsheets. Um, what has changed since the last time you received them? Um, the Penticat number came in ninety-two thousand three hundred dollars, I believe, less than, ninety-three thousand two hundred dollars less than their original assessment. Um, the Whittier number is up about ten thousand dollars. They're voting on their budget, I believe, this week. They said that was a, um, reliable number to use. So that's, we, I did increase that. Um, the, we received the Merrimack Valley Planning Assessment, which was only up fifty-six dollars, but I did put that increase in the budget. And the library's budget was slightly different, what was presented to finance than what I had. So I revised the library budget as well. So with those few changes in there, um, we are currently at a one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-five-dollar deficit. Uh, again, that's with the budgets requested. Very few changes have been made at this point. Um, that does not include any capital, which we discussed earlier, which was at two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. Probably come down to about, around two-hundred thousand with the change in the radios. Um, for those of you, um, here that weren't aware, the fire department radios on the Capitol Plan was at a hundred thousand dollars and he's negotiated them down to eighty-two thousand. So that's the true number of the Capitol radios at this point for the fire department.
The one-thirty-five and three-three-five, uh, the one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand is the budget as requested?
It's as of the working column, which I've already made some changes. Um, the changes were the highlighted that we've kinda talked about. Um, some of them are minimal. Like I said, mostly it was my department that I sort of tweaked a little bit.
So the departments that have asked for increases, for example, they're in it unless you, unless you modified it in the working column.
That is correct. So the, the deficit is based on the working column at this point. Um, there were no other changes. Like I said, I didn't recommend any other changes because both you nor finance have really had a chance to go through and make any recommendations, so I didn't update anything else in here. Um, one other thing I do wanna just throw out to the board, which could be a potential savings. Emily, that works in my office, that was appointed last August, is moving out of state, um, within the next month or so. So her position is twenty-eight hours a week at approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. Cassandra has expressed interest in moving over to that role because it's more hours and it's benefit-eligible. So one option that we could potentially look at would be to come up with some sort of combined position, where she still functions as the administrative assistant and the collection treasury clerk, doing both of those roles. So, over the last few months, my office may not need someone twenty-eight hours a week, every single week, and the admin position may not need eighteen hours a week, every single week. The benefit to that would be if my office is busier, there's additional coverage. If you need more projects, she could sit there and do more work. Um, I, you know, it's just something that was tossed out. She's still, she likes the work she does for you all, um, but she would be interested in more hours. So it's something to think about. If we did sort of a combined role and had a thirty-hour-a-week person filling in both of those spots, it could potentially save sixteen thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars.
Okay, question for you. In the girl that's leaving, how many hours a week?
She's twenty-eight hours.
She's twenty-eight. And right now, Cassandra for the selectmen?
Is eighteen and a half.
So eighteen and a half.
Yes, but some of those things, I mean, some of the benefits are, both of those jobs, with the exception of when it's busy and when we're collecting bills, really needs to be done in the tax office. But if there's just times with mail, she could take the mail and process payments from the selectmen's office. She could do selectmen projects at the, so her position really could be mobile because now with technology, you can really do it anywhere.
Okay.
Um, so like I said, it may not be that, you know, my problem is more coverage. I really need someone there five days a week to add office coverage. But ours, they could fluctuate. We could, you know, like I said, one week she could spend twenty hours in the selectmen's office.
Right.
So it was just, it was just, you know, when it came up, she said she was really interested in it, but she still loves the work she does for you all. So I, you know, wanted to throw it out there and see if there was any interest. Otherwise, we will be hiring for one of those positions.
Well, as long as, as long as, I'm saying, not, not speaking for the board, as long as, number one, she can do the selectmen's job in that job, in the timeline, and she can do it efficiently, and we're saving money, I'm for it. If, if you say, Bill, ah, I don't know, we might be a little tight here. We'll try to save sixteen thousand and be tight, I'm not for it. And I don't wanna stress her out, I don't wanna make the two positions not work well. But if you think that can be done, I'm for it. I think it's, I think it's a smart move, um...
I think she's very capable. I think she's, she's well-liked. Um, she picks up things quite easily. She's very familiar with our system now. She's used the system, the tax system, to look up payments and things like that. Um, I think she could, as long as she's good with time management and sort of figuring out a schedule of where she's dedicated for both times, and then go between the offices if things are needed. I personally don't see a problem. I wouldn't have brought it up if I did, if I thought there would be a problem. I think she's the right personality that could handle it.
I, I will say that every job I've given her and everything I've asked her to do, she's done it on time. She's been professional. She got a hold of me. Um, I have no qualms for what she's done so far for me. I, I think she's right on target and, and I know she's been here a short time, but, I mean, I can't talk highly enough about her. And she's polite. She's, I mean, just because maybe it's who I am, but she's been very polite and, and very, can I help you? Can I do anything to help you? I mean, I don't have a problem.
No, I, I, and, and I, I echo the same statement. Uh, she's, uh, she's got a great personality, always willing to help, uh, and, uh, she, she seems to be well-liked by, by people that she's dealt with, not within Town Hall, but, but others. Uh, I, I think that'd be, that'd be a good thing. I, you know, I'm, I'm all for that. I, I'll go along with it.
Well, that's it. We don't have to vote, but certainly the consensus would, oh, well, I'll wait for Dan to chime in, but the consensus for those three is to be very supportive of your idea and Cassandra.
And, you know, we could certainly say if there was an issue, we could even give it a six-month to see if it works out in the dual role.
Yeah, I would obviously do that, right, right.
And if it didn't, she could choose which one, you know. I, I, again, I don't see that there would be a problem.
What we would do with any money?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that there would be a problem. Um, like I said, she's a hard worker, she's very dedicated, she loves working here, um, so...
Do you have anything on that, Dan?
Just need, as long as, uh, she's, um, you know, I haven't buried her with, with work, but, you know, there's, I, I have a job to go to every day, you know, my business, and I can't be here during days, you know, so I need somebody on the ground, uh, in Town Hall, and if I need some documents, so I know what I'm doing, um, you know, I, I need that person, uh, here to help me, um, you know, pull the file, put the information together, compile some things, and that's, you know, I haven't monopolized her time, but she's been a resource to me, and as long as, you know, that continues for myself and everyone else here, but, um...
Right, and the benefit would be...
A lot of what we do is information-based, and I need somebody to get me information, so that wouldn't change.
That wouldn't change, and the benefit would be if she would then be in the building thirty hours a week. So again, if you needed something for a meeting that night...
Yeah.
Doesn't matter which office she's in, she could still have the capacity to go and get that.
Right.
So she would be here and available to you thirty hours a week. It may have to be some time management.
So it's more coverage, more coverage, right.
More coverage, and again, it would be two different positions she would be covering, but she'd be available for emails and phone calls and customers.
'Cause an example of that is, I don't put together the agenda, the chairman does. So I don't always know what's on the agenda until Thursday, when you, you send us a draft, right?
Right.
So I look at the agenda and it says, okay, we're gonna talk about Washington Hall, for example.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to see a copy of the lease at Washington Hall, so I know...
Right.
What's going on, or I...
Right, and currently she doesn't work Fridays.
Might need some supplemental information, so I'm, I'm informed.
Right.
Right?
Be working Fridays?
So currently she doesn't work Fridays, we would be adding Friday to her schedule, so she would be here five days a week and available.
How many hours would you be adding?
So she's at eighteen and a half.
But between the draft agenda and the meeting, uh, that's good, that, 'cause that would, it's helpful on the in-between in gathering information in preparation for the Monday meeting.
Correct, correct. So she's eighteen and a half.
So I'd support that, I'd support that.
My office is twenty-eight hours, I would look to do a thirty-hour. And I, you know, pretty similar to what Emily's current schedule is, only we'd extend it maybe an hour or two during the week, and then we'll figure out what hours she's dedicated here, what hours she's dedicated there. And like I said, if she needs to move, or if something's pressing on your side, or if it's a meeting week, she can spend more time down here. Really, unless, unless bills are due, it's when you need someone there to help the counter. But otherwise, she can do the job in both locations, answer phones, emails, mail, payments.
We don't know, we, we're not obligated to, um, have her work exact hours for either one.
No, no, and I would say that's probably, but I think still, for your benefit...
It'd be a guide, but an expectation.
Right, and, and she could, exactly, exactly. And the nice thing is we have our new phone system. She can see it and her messages in both locations. Obviously, email can be in both locations. So I, I think it would be a benefit. I think, like I said, I think she's proven herself, and it would, it would be a cost savings initially, so...
So I'm, I'm on board with it. My only thing would be, is, is it six-month probation period? If, if, if it's overwhelming, she goes back or whatever. Um, and I would like to make sure, like Dan said, I'd like to make sure she's still in that role of the selectman, if, even if she spends some time there, or whatever, however it works out, but...
Yeah.
Definitely as long as she's still here for us and, you know, like I'm meeting with her tomorrow and Larry from the, from the, um, realtor, so, I mean, as long as she can still keep doing those roles, I'm good with it.
I had one issue, 'cause I think it's in the budget and, uh, the minutes are paid for by some outsourcing, um, and I've never met that person. I don't know who they are, I don't know who, the, the mystery minutes person. I, I thought that when we, uh, talked about Cassandra's role previously, that she would be taking the minutes here. And then I think it turned out that she wasn't available for the selectman meetings to, you know, ten o'clock, if we run four hours, which seems to happen. So, you know, I thought that that was gonna be part of her role, and would we save the cost of the outsourcing of the minutes if we incorporated that into her job description?
So that was never gonna be part of her job description because, no, because the problem is, is to do the minutes, you're looking at, right, so right now...
Nancy used to do that, right?
Nancy used to do that, but she was salaried and didn't have a set number of hours, really.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Nancy would do most of that from home, nights and weekends. Um, to do, to have Cassandra do it, it was going to be probably eight hours every other week of her eighteen hours that she'd be sitting at the desk doing minutes. Um, back a year, well before Cassandra was hired, we outsourced the minutes. It was a decision, um, the board made. I posted an email on a administrative assistant listserv of all Massachusetts municipalities. We had about fifteen candidates apply. I had them all submit minutes, and we chose someone who had articulate and well-written minutes. She watches the YouTube video, does them from home, and I've never met her either. Um, I've spoken to her a few times on the phone, but she clearly does a great job with the minutes and sends them in pretty promptly. So personally, I think it's worked out quite well. I think if you take that in, again, it's gonna be...
It's gonna lessen time for her.
If we have a four-hour meeting or two meetings in a week, you know, that's cutting into her hours by sitting at a desk doing those minutes.
Is that outsourced, is that a ten-ninety-nine contract person?
Yes, it is.
I will, I will, I will chime in that I do have more experience than anyone here on this board being in government, and the, the quality of, um, Nancy's work was, uh, something that, uh, potentially could not be, you know, repeated or continued, and the quality of the, um, the minutes that we see with the person that we've hired are phenomenal also. So we're very fortunate, because, um, I do know from my past experience that sometimes minutes not done in the style that both Nancy and the new person...
Melanie.
Melanie do, which is really explicit, um, is problematic. Uh, some government units, and I know that the school committee, I don't know what they do now, but years ago, they, when I was on the school committee, they would do more of, um, almost, I, I won't say cryptic, but really kind of a summarized abbreviated, and we don't want that. We want what we have, which is an amazing quality service, which is a continuation of the way minutes have been managed here for a long, long time.
And one of the things, one of the things, Dan, too, is, is when you have someone outsourced to do the minutes, not that minutes get played with, but it would stop...
It's independent.
It's independent, and that was one of the reasons we kinda thought what we thought at the time, because they have nothing to do with the town of Groveland, they have no skin in the game. End of story. That's what they did.
They're deposition, I call them deposition quality.
And she actually works, she lives in Oakham, Mass., um, and she works for some, like, planning boards around there and does their minutes and things, so...
Good.
She actually thoroughly enjoys it.
So it's a real person in Massachusetts.
It is a real person in Massachusetts.
It's not outsourced in India.
No, no.
I think that's amazing than anybody, I think it's amazing...
She's a US citizen, and she'll be doing these minutes.
Not a legal immigrant or anything like that.
She'll be doing these minutes and probably laughing.
I think she does, I think she does a great job, and what, what's nice is they're, they're presented to us before the next meeting.
Yeah.
So we get a chance to, no, fantastic. I know, uh, in fact, I think it was when, when we, uh, joined the board, we were approving minutes that were, were back, uh, maybe, uh, maybe two months. Yeah, I can't remember exactly, but it, it's really good that, that we got these in a, in a timely fashion, and we can read them all, and they've been pretty accurate.
Well, I think it's remarkable, you found two people that actually enjoy working for us.
I know, look at that.
So in consensus, we have, as far as Cassandra goes, in consensus, are we good with that, everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll explore that option. Like I said, Emily will know more by the end of this week, what her last day is here. She's waiting on the movers. Um, we will miss her, she is very well-liked as well, but her husband accepted a job down in North Carolina, so they are packing up and moving. Um, so it's, it's, it's a loss to us, but we're lucky to have Cassandra that's ready to step in and start training.
Okay, so officially, it's the consensus of the board to support the chair in your recommendation.
Right, okay. All right.
So, yes, so, um, so I'm ready, if you have any questions, um, going through.
All right. So I'm just gonna go through some quick things. I know Dan asked last week for you to do a spreadsheet, moved over. Um, kinda what I'm gonna probably do is, I went in the municipal buildings. Um, I have some areas in there that we probably should talk about, and one of them would be making the, um, our current janitor more hours to do the town facility, and the two, uh, upcoming bathrooms, keeping those clean, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one area we need to talk about. I'm not, I don't know if you guys are willing to talk about it tonight, or you wanna look at it more, but, um...
What do you have in mind?
Do you want me to answer as you go along, or do you wanna wait and...
Well, what do you have in mind?
I have in mind...
Cut the page open, let's...
I have in mind, it's under municipal buildings, and I have in mind to go with the recommended layout here that we increase, I...
Takala.
Takala, um, his hours to take care of the town property, mowing, weed whacking, flowers, whatever. Um, the bathrooms that are gonna be at the Shannon Hand Field and at the pines, um, and any other projects throughout the town, police station, fire station, that he needs to do. Um, and I'm not gonna criticize the highway department, 'cause they're busy. Over the years, they've been short-staffed, but I know I've come to this building, and they barely have time to mow this building. And, you know, and they, they can't weed whack it, and, and they, therefore, they are, they can't do it. And I know in our last budget season, we talked about giving the highway department another, another full-time employee. I was the one that said, you know, we'll go with one, one next year. I think Joe was on board with it. Um, if we're gonna put another full-time person on, it's gonna be more benefits, it's gonna be more money, um, sick days, et cetera, et cetera. We have this gentleman here. I know we're gonna have to give him insurance probably, and we're gonna have to give him, um, health insurance and benefits. Now, my question to you would be, if you were to take a highway guy versus Takala, are we...
So, yeah, so a couple of things.
Dollar wise?
So first off, I just wanted to preface it, just so everybody's aware. So this is not something that he has come and said, I need more hours, I want more hours, et cetera. This was something that Bob Ericalian and I, as we were trying to figure out what to do around and staff and things like that, actually Bob recommended we take Takala and make him full-time. Um, he's currently at eighteen and a half hours a week. He maintains five buildings, and he does more than cleaning. His maintenance, right now, he's painting and cleaning the cells in the police station. Um, he repaired the doors, the front doors at the library. Um, he does ceiling tiles, he paints the walls, he, he painted the banisters out front. So around his cleaning, he's fitting in projects that have been lacking. So, and I could tell you that you can ask anybody in any department at any of those buildings, and they rave about how meticulous he is. Uh, so Bobby came to me and said, I think it would be a great fit that he maintain the complex in its entirety. He handles the grass, the weed whacking, maybe we get some flowers. Um, I can tell you, one of his specialties is, as I said, he's meticulous. He comes in with a blower and blows all the sidewalks and the walkways, so that, you know, when the grass is cut, you're not tracking that grass into the buildings. You're not tracking the sand and salt from the snow into the buildings. He really pays attention of every aspect of his job. So the increase would be, um, eighteen thousand dollars, and that also includes the normal two percent increase. Of that eighteen thousand, we cut nine thousand dollars out of Bob's highway budget. Uh, we cut the part-time wages, so we will not need the same part-time help mowing the lawn at Town Hall if we increase his hours. So it's really only about nine thousand dollars additional that we would be asking for. Yes, on top of that, he would be eligible for health, health insurance. Uh, I don't know if he needs it or not, um, and he would be eligible for vacation, sick, and personal time. Uh, those would be the things he would be eligible for. He would, he would be eligible to join the retirement system, which obviously adds costs down the road. Um, but compared to a forty-six-thousand-dollar-ish-a-year-union-highway guy to add, you know, we felt this was a much better and more efficient option to increase services around the Town Hall and municipal building complex.
Right. Um, so I'm not looking to make a decision on this tonight, but I did talk to Takala last week. I asked him if he can give me a layout of what he's done since he's been here and where he wants to go. So when I say when he wants to go, he'll tell me, Bill, I think there's these projects around Town, around the Town Hall I need to see, I need to get them done. So when I come back to you guys, I wanna have a, a piece of paper in my hand showing you what, what he, what he's trying to do and what have you, to, to justify, um, the work. So he said he'd get that together for me. Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just got some comments here. We're looking, looking at the whole, uh, the whole budget. The, the Conservation Commission is looking for a, uh, conservation officer. There's a, propose for the, a town planner. There's a proposal for the fire chief to increase his hours to thirty hours. The increase in the hours for the, the Town Hall custodian. And, uh, I, I'm just wondering if, uh, instead of hiring the custodian full-time, no question that he does a good job, no question that he's well-liked, what about another part-time employee? That you're not having to pay vacation, sick time, personal days, retirement benefits, and medical benefits? Um, instead of boosting him up, it, it, I'm, I'm not sure that we can afford it, but we could afford probably, uh, another part-time employee.
How much does a part-time employee cost?
Well, it depends what your hours are. When we pay him, it'll be seventeen thousand, it'll be more than, about eighteen, nineteen thousand is what we're paying him part-time.
But with a, with a, another part-time employee, you're not paying the retirement benefits, you're not paying the medical benefits, you're not eligible for vacation time, you're not eligible for personal days, holidays, or sick time. Uh, I, I just think that, uh, with what we're looking at as a, a potential increase of employees here, that I, I don't think that we can afford another full-time guy.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
I, I agree with that. I mean, I'm not gonna go to town meeting and, um, you know, argue that we're gonna have a prop two-and-a-half override when the budget, um, has an expansion of payroll. So I understand, um, I mean, if Highway wants to shift, um, responsibility, um, on the part-time and do a, uh, a budget-neutral transfer, um, dollar-for-dollar, you shift that over to, uh, maintenance of Town Hall, then I agree with Ed that we gotta get two part-timers instead of one. We can't add, we're not even paying, it's not even in here today, that eighty-five-thousand-dollar annual, uh, uh, benefit obligation. That's snowballing, ten years, you're looking at eight-hundred-fifty-a-billion dollars. You're gonna have a balloon payment, folks. Um, and, uh, and maybe, uh, you know, I won't be here or anyone else on the board, but someone down the road's gonna get a bill for a million bucks in the next ten years, 'cause we're not paying for benefits, uh, in this town. So, uh, uh, I'm not gonna sit here and, uh, say we're gonna add to that and, uh, snowball that. We need to pay that, uh, that, that deficit of one-thirty-five is really two and change without capital improvement. So I don't think we could add the payroll.
You don't?
Um, so that's my opinion on that. I, I won't, I won't support expanding the payroll or the, look, the taxpayers at the eye and say, we're, we're gonna ask you for, to pay more taxes.
They did not, they did not put in for someone else.
The, the other thing on the highway, let's talk about that, 'cause, okay, there's a shift on the part-time payroll there, but if you look at the highway department's budget, um, on line item, uh, highway salaries, I mean, you're going from two-eleven, two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-zero-one, um, they want two-twenty-five. Well, two-eleven to two-twenty-five, that's not a two percent pay, pay increase, so it looks like there's, there's, there's more salary, um, in that than two percent. So I don't know where that number comes from, and whether or not that's additional hours or additional manpower, but, um, two percent of two-eleven ought to be what? Four thousand and change, maybe four to five thousand bucks, not a fourteen-thousand-dollar increase. So, um, you know, who's getting paid more at the highway department?
So the highway union is at two-and-a-half percent. They're the only union that was at two-and-a-half percent. And in their union contract, if they obtain additional licenses, they increase their salary. And several of them are in the process of increasing licenses. So we, so Bobby put in the budget anticipation of those increases. So that number is probably high than, higher than it needs to be, um, but I think he was trying to plan on the safe side instead of underfunding it and then having to come back for money. So, but you'd have to, I don't know the specific number of what they're looking for for licenses, um, but there is extra in there to cover that cost.
So, so we get the same amount of work and we're just paying fourteen thousand more for it? I mean, what, what do we get for our fourteen thousand, other than, okay, you got two guys with a class-two license?
Yeah, so there are more specialty licenses, um...
Hydraulic licenses?
No, even more specific, like catch basin. So you need a specific license to do the catch basin cleaning. The beaver traps need a specific license. So there are certain things that, over the years, they've brought in-house, and a former employee who left a few years ago, or last year, had many of those licenses. So when he left, there was no one on staff to really be the point person for some of those tasks. So the guys have been going through the process to get some of those licenses, so that they continue on these jobs.
Well, I just, uh, you know, I, I think it's, you know, the guy's probably doing an exceptional job, but I mean, you know, it's nice to hire full-time employees, but we just can't keep expanded, uh, uh, full-time employees with, uh, full panties. We, we can't afford it, it's a town with seven thousand people.
All right, so we're gonna move forward from that one. We'll come back to it again, 'cause I, like I said, I'm waiting for some paperwork to come in from him anyway. No reason to hammer that one down yet. Um, moving forward, I had the, my, um, the police chief, or fire chief, my eyeglasses on, I shouldn't tell you.
Looks like police.
Police. So does anyone wanna discuss anything in this budget? I'll, I'll start by saying, which, um, in, in sixteen, they had five thousand dollars in training, and then in seventeen, they have twelve thousand proposed. Um, probably because I don't, whatever reason, we can get an explanation. If you guys think we need to have them come in and discuss this budget, we can.
So I can tell you that some of the finance committee members encourage them to increase their training budget, um, because of conversations that have taken place over the years, that they don't have enough training going on. So what the chief was able to do was, um, since the fuel costs are down, he was able to shift, you know, fuel costs and cover some of those increases. So that's why he increased his training budget. Um, the fire, uh, the police department, excuse me, is, um, the finance board is hoping to meet with them in the next, I think at their next meeting. Um, I just haven't finalized that yet.
So basically, it's not an increased budget, it's more of a lateral move with money?
Correct, so his budget overall is a two percent increase. It's because he was able to move some. So if you look at that next page, Bill, right from where you are...
Yep.
You'll see the fuel is down, ten thousand.
Yep, I saw that, yep.
So by shifting some of the costs, it, it's not like he added additional expenses. He's putting it into training to add additional training programs.
So it's not costing the taxpayers, is what I'm saying.
I, I think the police department did a, a, a great job at staying within prop two-and-a-half. Some of the other budgets are skewed high, and they're, they require overrides if we say yes to all of them.
Right.
So I, I think the police department worked within, within the means of the people of Groveland. Uh, so, you know, I think that's a job well-done there.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with the police budget, Bill.
It's been consistent for many years.
Yep. All right, so moving, moving down, I think, with police department, are we all on agree? We're good with the police department now?
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay.
Can I just comment, just in terms of, um, the, when we present the, well, the finance committee's gonna present the budget, but we'll certainly chime in at some point...
Yes.
As we're doing now, we're discussing it. Um, these numbers get approved at town meeting, but that's not to say that some of these are contractual positions that still require negotiations.
So all of the negotiations are done.
Is it, they are?
So anything that requires physical negotiations, all of the contracts are in multi-year contracts. So there's nothing right now, um, except for one position is up for negotiations, but I don't know where we are with that. Um, so there's nothing else on the table to negotiate salary-wise. But you all are still the salary-setting body. So if anyone's looking for an increase, that comes before you.
Who, who has a multi-year contract?
Um, all the unions, police chief, deputy chief, myself. That's it.
So who, who's, who's up this year for this current budget?
The fire chief's contract expired.
Is your budget up? I mean, your contract up?
No, no, none of them are up.
Pol- police?
No. The fire chief's contract expired last year, um, and the board at the time was unable to reach an agreement. So he's not, he does not have a contract, so absence of that, his, his contract just continues on.
Okay.
So that way, you set his salary each year, absent of a, a contract.
No union contracts are up this budget?
Nope, they're all up next. So June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, is when every contract expires. Next year is when all contracts expire.
Seventeen. So whatever is in the written contract, that's it, and, and this doesn't modify that in any way?
That is correct. So really, we talked about back in like the fall, that when you take out the non-contractual employees, it's a very small percent. You're really only talking town hall employees and library, which is why we stayed with a consistent two percent for them, 'cause every other contract is two percent. The highway's at two and a half percent.
What, what is the isolated two percent cost of the non-contractual employees? Do you, do you have a, a raw number for that or, or a ballpark?
Off the top, it was, it was really insignificant.
'Cause they're all over the place.
It was minimal.
It was, it was minimal, and I'll send you...
It, it, 'cause it doesn't say out here who's contractual and who isn't, so I don't know.
Right. So I, I can give you, I sent you guys a spreadsheet. Again, it was sort of when we started the budget process.
What's minimal? Is it eighteen, twenty grand?
Yes, it's around there.
It's not a hundred?
It's not a hundred, no.
Minimal.
No. It's not, again, you're talking maybe...
Minimum means nothing to an accountant. You gotta quantify it.
You're talking probably thirteen employees.
Minimal for you might be...
A thousand dollars, thirteen employees. It would be thirteen thousand bucks at the high.
But they're not, they're, they're not a thousand dollars.
I'm just saying, I rounded it up.
But you're talking like thirteen, fifteen employees. It's not a lot of people. It's, it's really, it's town hall and the library.
It's under twenty thousand dollars.
I believe so. And I, I can probably look it up if I can, uh, get to my email.
And, and my thought, my thought is, if you have the, the highway and the police and all these other, all these other departments on contractual raises at two percent.
Yeah.
I think the town employees should not be held accountable. I said it last year, not to give them a raise. I think they should get their two per rate, two percent rate, just because they're not in the union. They work hard, they do their job, and it, it's, it's not that bad. I mean, I mean, it is money, but you know something?
I don't disagree with you. I'm just figuring it out. I, I wanna trim this budget somehow, some way.
Okay.
And I need to know what direction I'm going in and what I'm not.
I know, we're having conversations.
So highway employees are all under a contract.
So let's just say that, that was a hundred thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
We would have to grapple with it.
Um, the entire police department, all the different positions are under a union contract. Um, then I said, the police chief, the deputy chief, myself are the only contracts. Uh, everyone else is non-union.
Bill, can I ask one more question, yeah, on that? Okay, so you have the non-contractual employees. Now their benefits, their health insurance, is that escalating in, 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 uh, firing above two and a half percent? 'Cause, 'cause I don't see the, I can't connect the dots on those, so I'm gonna ask you. So if their associated benefits are going up eight percent, uh, at, at some point in time, let's just say that was eight percent every year in perpetuity, we would have to have a frank discussion on maybe sharing more of the cost of health insurance, for instance. So if the split's seventy-five, twenty-five, or eighty, twenty, what...
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Is that the same for contractual employees as well?
Same for every employee and every retiree that has insurance with us, it's seventy-five, twenty-five.
So, so what, what are those cost escalations?
So since we joined the GIC, when it was initially opened up to municipalities, the GIC, you know, people can have their own opinions on it, but the GIC has done a remarkable job keeping the costs low. Prior to the GIC, the town of Groveland was in the Maya Group, which is a Blue Cross affiliate. You know, it was not uncommon to have twenty percent increases, as Dr. McQueen alluded to. Eleven percent, ten percent, double digits every year. The GIC, um, in the budget, I had put in a five percent increase. I actually got the rates this afternoon, that the average, um, is three point six, seven percent over the entire bank of plans. Um, so really, it'll, it'll filter in differently because that's their average. So some may be a little higher, some may be a little bit lower. Um, once I plug that into our, um, roster to see really the plans that people have and what those rates are, I'll get a better number of what we should be budgeting for. Um, but it's, it's still, it's been, like last year, it was under five. It's always been under five percent with the GIC. They do a really great job of beating the plans up. One plan came in higher than what they wanted. They're actually freezing the plan out. No one can join that plan, no one can switch to that plan. If you're in it, you're in it. If you get out, you're done. So they are really, they hold the line with the state, so.
At, at, or time, I said one, but could I, I'll ask five more later.
Six.
Associated benefit costs, are they on a par between contractual and non-contractual and other? So for instance, you get a full-time, non-contractual employee. Does the town fund their retirement benefit obligations at the same rates as a, as a union guy?
Yes, so the retirement percentage is set by your date of hire. Um, doesn't matter what you're in, union-wise or non-union. So the newest employees are hired at a nine percent of their own contribution. So the new employees are pretty much funding their entire pension themselves. The issue is the older employees, so...
There's no match for the new guys.
Well, there still is, if you look at it, but they're at nine percent, so they're almost fully funding their own pension. When you look at some of the older employees that have been here, that might be at five percent, seven percent, even eight percent. You know, we may still be supplementing some of their physical pension, not the benefits, not the health insurance, but the physical pension. So now that they've changed the contributions, you're gonna see that municipalities are paying less towards the actual pension piece, because they're funding more of it themselves.
That number's going down, so that's not, that component cost isn't exceeding Prop two and a half, the two and a half percent.
Um, I'd have to check, this year, we get a set number, but...
You isolated that number. It's not growing beyond two and a half percent.
Um, I'll double-check. I don't think so. But it, it still includes your pay-as-you-go health insurance. So that's included in our appropriation. So we're paying as we go. We're not paying yet for the liability that's out there.
Okay.
So, so that number may escalate more than the two and a half percent, but really, the pension part is getting smaller and the health part is probably getting bigger.
Do we have any sort of, uh, uh, matrix or a database of, uh, attrition rates for employees and what we're gonna look at looming? Is it, it's gonna, it's going to accelerate at some point, I would expect, as a baby boomers that, you know?
Yeah, I would say within three to five years, the majority of town hall will be retired. Um, so within three to five years, you will see, um, ninety percent of the people here are within that three to five years from the retirement age. Um, so you will see, I'm sorry?
How old are you?
Not me.
We got some big bells coming.
So you will see, you will see, yes, we'll have to be paying out sick buyback. Um, any vacation accrued that's on the books, things like that are all gonna hit in the next few years as people start retiring.
You don't have any of the five percenters left, do you?
I, no, none, none that actually work here, no. Not anymore.
Well, maybe one.
All right, Bill.
It's a big budget, that's for now, yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thanks for, thanks for listening.
We'll come back.
Yeah, let's move on, it's a big budget.
Moving on, um, we come up to the fire budget. Um, some of the areas I underlined was the, um, the first item. I know Ed's gonna talk about it. Go ahead, Ed.
I'm gonna use the same analogy that I used with the, uh, town hall custodian. We're, we're adding a full-time employee. The, the fire chief is looking to increase his hours to the thirty hours a week. Uh, a twenty-two thousand dollar pay increase. It, again, it, it's gonna, uh, uh, entitle him to, uh, medical benefits, retirement benefits, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I, I'm not sure that the town can afford it. I, I'd, I'd like to stay with, uh, something with other, other than the increase.
The, the budget that Denise has, if you look at the working column in the budget worksheet here that Denise prepared for us, the, um, hundred and thirty-five thousand and change that we are short has factored in, um, a lot of things. But one of them is that the fire chief's salary is factored in at twenty-eight thousand, one ninety-four, so just a two percent increase.
So that was based on some discussions that the board had. Um, yes, that's just a two percent at this point.
Otherwise, we would be short a hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
If we, um, if the finance committee, or us, or whoever, granted the, um, request of an eighty-two percent increase in the fire chief's salary, which is what it would be, we would go from, um, twenty-seven thousand to fifty thousand. Twenty-two thousand dollar increase would be eighty-two percent, and that would, uh, bring our overall budget deficit from one thirty-three and change to one fifty.
Okay, so on this, on this budget right here, I would like to see if the board would like to have the department come in and discuss their budget?
He's already coming in. I've already invited him, because he did ask for salary increase, so he's on the agenda for next Monday.
Okay, okay, good.
Um, because he should be discussing his request.
And that's why I'd rather do it then. I just, okay, so we'll move forward from that one. We'll see him next Monday?
Monday the seventh is the water and sewer commissioners.
Okay.
And the fire chief.
All right, so we won't talk about that anymore?
Well...
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, the fire, equipment and supplies are going from twelve thousand to twenty-nine thousand. Why?
That's why we got him coming in.
Seventeen K increase?
Oh, that's why we'll have him come in. We'll have to ask him these questions next.
I have to give Ed and Dan a lot of credit, because there, there's a classic example where I'd like to see the details in that. You know, that needs to be broken. You guys have been advocating for that, not just here, but everywhere. You know, we need to see details, not just a big category like that. Because I have no idea what we have...
We're gonna bring, he'll be in and we'll, we'll discuss it.
Hundred and thirty-eight percent increase, I'd like to see some details.
Yeah, is the, is the PR guy in there?
Probably not in that line.
We'll find out.
What lines, what lines the PR guy?
We'll find out on Monday the seventh. Okay, so moving, moving down the line, um, we come up to the health department. I'll, I'll put a tab in here.
So what's going on with that? Why do we have a decrease in the...
So the health department requested, um, an increase in their expense budget. Um, which if you look back historically, they were at five thousand, but didn't spend nearly enough of that. Uh, so last year, we cut them down to three. Uh, they're still well under budget. Um, I personally feel that they would be sufficient with another three percent, uh, three thousand dollar expense line and not increasing it for five. So...
What, what'd they ask for?
They asked for five.
And they didn't spend the last, the whole five yet?
No, they're at three thousand now, because they haven't, they hadn't been spending five thousand a year. They were spending well under that. So we cut them last year.
Right.
And they still have plenty of expense money right now.
All right, so if we went to...
So I felt that it was too big of a jump in a difficult year to increase that.
So if we went to thirty-five hundred, um, they could, that should be a, a livable expense?
One of their reasonings and their request was to fund new computers for their office. And I had told them that those come under the technology budget, not their budget. Um, so I didn't see why they needed to increase.
So this is the whole computer slash?
No, no, it's not.
Okay, all right. So does anyone wanna make a recommendation on this budget?
Well, I don't, I, not to disrespect you, Mr. Jammett, I don't think you should be making actual recommendations tonight.
Well, I meant talk, whatever, yeah, talk about it. Anyone have anything with...
Well, I don't see any problem with them coming in. Well, they, they can meet with finance board first anyway.
Okay.
No?
I don't know that they will.
Which one you looking at?
The health department.
Page is that one.
So on the spreadsheet, it's item number thirty-six, or thirty-seven. It's towards the, towards the farther half of the book.
Looking at your three-two printout here.
Yep, so it's on, it's line item thirty-seven is what he's looking at on the three-two printout.
They're one and two percent, eh?
Well, he's looking at that, can I ask you a question?
I mean...
On the trash recycling contract, that put out the bid so many years, are we just staying with the same contractor? Do we ever put out, put out the bid to see if we're comparable and all that?
Yep, so it's under a five-year contract. It was done prior to my arrival. Um, it's year three. We have two more years on the contract.
Okay.
Um, one of the initiatives as part of the community compact that I am working on is working with Merrimack Valley Planning to try and do a regional trash agreement.
Okay.
Currently, all of the small communities in this area have a different trash vendor. We all pay significantly different prices.
Right.
We are the only ones that use hilts. Um, so one of the thoughts was if we could get a regional bid, you know, get one company to handle five or four or five of the smaller communities, we might get better pricing. Uh, so Merrimack Valley Planning is in the process of putting together some documents. They will actually handle the bidding for us to see if it's advantageous. We couldn't get in until July first, twenty eighteen, but it's still worth going through the exercise.
And, and I've, I've always said this, and I'm probably gonna talk out of line here a little bit, but at four hundred eighty-two thousand dollars to pick up the trash in the town of Groveland, I always, I always was a firm believer, if we had bought a trash truck and two guys put them on and had a recycling center at the highway garage, I wonder if we could save money. Do we ever, probably never looked at it that way.
It's, it's a tipping fees that, that kill you.
The what fees? Tipping fees, we both have to dump the trash.
Dump fees.
Anyway...
Yes, so, and, and you'll see that some of that, you know, we may not spend four hundred and whatever it is, eighty-seven thousand, because it's based on four hundred eighty-two thousand, 'cause a lot of it's based on the per-ton weight.
Right.
So...
At the end of the year, you get a final bill.
At the end, and, and we do check it every month. We look to see where we come in each month, to see where we are in the budget. And it does stay fairly reasonable. I, we, we tend to be under every month where we need to be. Um, it's the collection per month, so for this upcoming year, it's twenty-three thousand, eight eighty-four, seventy-five per month, regardless of the tonnage.
They, uh, they presented a nice, or somebody did anyway, maybe it was you, presented a nice breakdown of, uh, what was, uh, what was collected.
Yeah, so that was Laurie...
Actually, I can't find it right now.
That was Laurie Benson, the, um, so she, if you look at the rubbish, rubbish collection in the budget, there is a contract administrator. That's actually part of her salary. So she spends part of her week in the Board of Health handling the trash contract. She handles the complaints and the calls. So she prepared this, gave you a, um, showed you what the tonnage has been each month for the last two years. Um, gave you some estimates on, um, the recycling as well. And then she put in a copy of the contract, so you can actually see what the costs are in the contract.
Okay, so my second question was, you just answered it. Who was the trash collector administrator? So you just answered that.
Yes, so her salary along with her salary in the health department, uh, makes up her weekly salary.
All right. So does anyone want to have any more discussion on this, the health department? From the five thousand to thirty-five, you wanna...
Yeah, as well.
So...
All right.
Let him explain it. You wanna bring it up again? I mean, wait till the finance talks about it? I don't know.
I do wanna talk a little bit about cemetery.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
We're kind of cherry-picking.
Did I go by it already?
Uh, what, what was that doing?
Did we go by the cemetery?
Yes, we went by it.
Cemetery would be next from the rubbish. It's before health, but after trash, so...
So, so Denise just saying, we're talking about this, we shouldn't be talking about money. We shouldn't be talking about, um, any, any of these? You think it's too soon to talk about recommendations?
No, I just, I wouldn't make recommendations, because what, what, what you need to do, um, is in the town warrant, there will be a column. So the working column obviously will go away.
Yeah.
The budget will, the warrant will show exactly as it is, only the Board of Selectmen recommends would be filled in with all of your recommendations, and then there'll be a column for finance.
You wanna wait to do that at a later date?
Well, yes, because the problem is you need to have a balanced budget.
Okay.
So we need to be able to have a budget under the Board of Selectmen recommends that does not have a deficit. So I just think it's premature to vote on individual items.
You may have to change that number up.
Correct. 'Cause I think we should go through when you're making all of your recommendations, line by line.
I, I got what you're saying, okay.
So you can make notes, you can recommend things, but I, I think it's a little premature to actually make the votes.
Perfect, I got it, okay. So moving forward, um, we have the water department, which Denise just said they're coming in. I don't think we need to talk about it, because...
We'll do that on Monday, yeah?
Yep, they're coming in. And then we're moving forward to wherever that was I had it here, it must've got knocked off the cemetery. I know, Joe, you wanted to talk about the cemetery.
Yeah, um, just, um, the groundkeepers, I mean, this is an area that I, um, have traditionally defended. Um, so, uh, maybe, um, you can help Denise or, or Bill can help us understand what is intended here with the budget. We have a line item, so the public can follow me. Groundkeepers of, um, what was approved last year was six thousand. What is being requested is eight thousand, five hundred. So that's a forty-two percent increase. The actual dollar increase is two thousand, five hundred. And, and what's the goal? To get two or three labors? Part-time, is that correct?
Yes, so if you'll recall, last year, uh, we went through a process, because the cemetery budget had historically not been funded by the general fund.
Right.
They were taking in their own fees, putting it in a, in an account, and spending it on their expense budget, um, which is not appropriate for municipal finance in a general fund budget. So they had to...
It was a make-your-own revolving account.
Exactly. So they had to, in turn, we had to change it, so that their fees that they're generating come into the general fund, and they had to request a full budget. Last year, they requested eighty-five hundred. Um, but given it was the first year of their budget and trying to make ends meet, last year, we... Last year, they requested eighty-five hundred, um, but given it was the first year of their budget and trying to make ends meet, last year, we decided to only provide them six thousand.
So, we're bringing them back, we're suggesting to bring them back?
They are suggesting, I will tell you, they overspent their six thousand, um, there was a situation last fall where I told them they needed to re-release, if you will, the part-time staff, because, just because they need help doesn't mean you have a free pass to overspend your budget. So, they had to terminate the part-time staff earlier than they would have expected, because they were working more hours each week and they spent money faster. So, this year, they are again asking for the eighty-five hundred dollars to be two or three laborers. One of the difficulties with the Cemetery Department is, um, they do not classify as seasonal employees under the Department of Unemployment, because they're working from April, May-ish through November, that is much too long to be a seasonal timeframe. And the Department of Unemployment assistants determined that they're not doing anything differently than the Cemetery foreman is. He still cuts the grass in their absence, he still maintains things, so they did not determine that their, their positions were technically seasonal. That someone's gonna do it anyway, is whether it's them or not, they're a little bit different from like lifeguards that come in in the summer, and things that are clearly two or three months. So, in that case, we have to keep them under twenty hours a week, because they would be eligible for benefits, and they would be eligible for unemployment if we, so we consider them temporary part-time work. Which is why they have several instead of one full-time employee for that period of time.
So, what we used to do when I was there?
Yeah.
We used to have one in the spring for a certain amount of time, up to a certain amount of time, and then we'd have one come in the fall for leaves. And we used to have them leave for so many months in the hot season, in the summertime, so I don't know how they're doing it, but that was how we went around it.
So, that's not, so what they did was they hired, last year they had three kids
Yeah.
um, who worked, they came in, in, right before Memorial Day.
Yeah.
And then they came back once school got out and worked every single week until, I believe it was mid-October.
Okay. However they do it, it's, that's their thing, so.
Those are part-time, under nineteen hours, no, we won't be triggering any benefits.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Again, if they were seasonal and if unemployment classified them as that, they could work forty hours, but they're not, so we cannot have them work over the nineteen hours.
Right. And then, um.
So, they collect unemployment when they leave?
They don't.
They don't.
Technically, they could be eligible if they applied, because they're again a longer period of time. But thankfully, they're all high school or college kids that haven't applied for those benefits.
If they're in school, they can't.
So, if we move forward again and we go to capital improvements, again, capital improvements is over and above what we're already over.
Yes, that is correct.
So, if we approve all these capital improvements at two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, we're going to be over and possibly need an override.
Correct, so, with the deficit of one-thirty-five, you would add, again, it's about two-hundred thousand now with the Fire Department's decrease, uh, maybe two-hundred-and-ten thousand. Yeah, so, so a couple of things, a couple of ways you can handle capital. You can pay cash for them upfront that year, or we certainly could borrow it, um, I know not everyone likes that, but it's a way to get some projects done when you don't have the full amount of cash. All of those items, I believe, after researching them, are all considered departmental equipment under the Department of Revenue guidelines, so they would only be five-year borrowings. So, the most we could borrow those would be five years, then they would be paid off. Again, you're still talking on a two-hundred thousand, you're still talking, say, forty-five thousand dollars a year that we'd have to find for the next five years, but it would cover those items. So, those are things that can be decided once you have your budget and make cuts and see where we stand. Again, if we have free cash or a decent amount of free cash, you could apply free cash to some of those prod, some of those items. You know, that's sort of a better use of one-time revenue than balancing the budget, obviously, if we need to, we need to. But there's a few options to how, on how to handle those when the time comes.
Well, what, what, how, how are we gonna decide the cuts, you know, 'cause, uh, why, why wouldn't it be simply, uh, just send back the department budgets that exceed, uh, you know, two and a half percent and let them, you know, reassemble their line items and come back to us?
We can also, we can also do it for them in the working column, as we've done.
We could do that, but I mean, uh, you know, I mean, I, I, I don't know what their priorities are over at the Fire Department, but if, if, if they submit a budget that's two-point-five percent and not a schmidge and more, then let them reassemble the numbers, I mean, I don't want to tell them they don't need, you know, Scott Air Packs if they do.
Well, and I think you certainly could, you know, if, if he's, the Fire Department's coming in on Monday, you, I could ask him to come in with the revised budget, that he would make some cuts versus you making those cuts.
We don't even, we haven't had the conversation with them on the existing budget yet.
But otherwise, what's our approach, I mean, we're gonna make line item vetoes and start crossing stuff out?
That's what we did last year, we went through and picked and chose where we, where we thought we could save even small amounts of money, we cut.
That's one method, but, you know, my preference would be less, you run your department, run it with impromptu and a half, resubmit it, we'll take a look at it, I mean, it's a different approach, but.
Right, but unfortunately.
Because that's our meeting, I mean, it's what, an hour before the people are showing up and you're in there crossing out stuff, I mean, that's kind of a.
Right, but unfortunately, even if every department.
Kind of panic mode, isn't it?
Even if every department stays with impromptu and a half, we're still not gonna balance. Our two and a half is three-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, that goes one-hundred percent to the schools if you're looking at that, so.
But we'll be a lot, we'll be a lot lower than a two-hundred thousand bucks.
We will be lower.
We'll be a lot lower, and it's a better starting point for us.
Right, it's a better starting point, but time-wise, I don't know, I guess it depends on how you want to handle it. The budget needs to be in the warrant and voted on April eleventh, so before April eleventh, you need to have a balanced budget, you and the Finance Committee need to have balanced budgets.
Both have two versions.
And they could match, they could be the same, but what you recommend may be different than what they recommend, I can tell you after my meeting with Finance on Monday, I get the feeling that they are not going to support anything that has an increase, they, their plans were to redline the entire expense budget.
Outline it, yeah. Yeah.
Which I said, there are obviously contractual obligations that we have, you know, there are things that need to increase, we have certain things that do increase every year, so. That seemed to be their approach, but they haven't made any decisions, they haven't met with any departments.
Here's the other thing, like, like Cemetery, for example, I mean, they only want to go part-time, uh, wages, you know, twenty-five hundred bucks, right? But on a percentage basis, it's creep, I mean, it's just, you turn that heat up slowly and the frog in the pot starts jumping. So, we're jumping over two and a half percent on a lot of things, and it's, you can't really put your finger on everything unless you get into the devil in the details, and there's a lot of devils in here.
Well.
Yeah, one more thing, they, they came in here in capital improvements, they wanted a new twenty-thousand-dollar machine, I would think that would create some efficiencies in picking up the grass clippings, and maybe you get by with less people because you got a machine.
Well, and I would say, I think that's something that you may want to speak to Cemetery about, because I was informed by a capital improvement committee that that was one of the pitches, is that if they have this machine, they may not need as much part-time help, I haven't heard that, but that's what they seem to have been informed with.
If you spent twenty thousand for a machine or spent eight thousand for picking up the leaves by manual labor, what's cheaper?
Right, but it's eight thousand dollars a year, every year, versus maybe a twenty thousand dollar equipment investment.
If we floated.
It really depends.
I'm all for replacing, you know, uh, manpower with machines and robots.
Are we, um.
If we could run government with a robot, would, would be, would be good for the town.
Are we, uh, I don't think, um, as it stands with your working column, even if we use the five-year credit upon, uh, the bonds to help pay for the capital improvements, that would wipe out the need for an override.
No, but so.
It would be a heck of a lot smaller.
But it actually, so keep in mind, if you pay cash, it's now, if you borrow, it's not until the next year, so if we borrow those items, we're not paying for them until fiscal eighteen, and that's only interest if we ban it and then push it off, so it depends how you structure your bond, but it's never in the same fiscal year.
And what I was gonna try, let me just talk for a minute, what I was trying to do, what I was gonna say is, we talk about this capital improvements and all these, you know, not all, but the, what's in front, in front of us, if we were a year down the road, and I know this is hypothetical, and, and we maybe had a land sale here or there, it's only gonna help us next year, so do we look at saying we may have a better year next year, we may have some land sales or whatever, you don't know, that's hypothetical, again, I always say, is it a need or is it a want? That's how I look at it, is it a need or a want?
Right, so a couple of things on that, so, yes, if, if we sell any land this fiscal year, I'm just gonna use this fiscal year for instance, then the hope would be that it closes out to free cash, we have that ability for when we do the fiscal eighteen budget to apply those funds. The same thing with the additional money coming back from FEMA for the blizzard, you know, we have about a hundred thousand dollars coming back to us, it doesn't go in, it goes in as just a, you know, other state revenue, the hope would be that that goes to free cash. So, yes, so eighteen may be looking better depending on what other revenue things we bring in, again, there's no guarantee, and there's no guarantee what else is gonna come down the road. But, there is an option to, um, so you wouldn't be paying, if you decide to borrow any of those, you would not be paying for them in fiscal seventeen.
So, that could potentially eliminate.
It could eliminate a seventeen issue, it may create an eighteen issue depending on what happens in the next year. But yes, that is correct.
Alright, good, okay, so capital, capital improvements, we, we already talked to the, we had the conversation about the radios already. We had the conversation about the Cemetery vehicle, we know what it was, he showed us and talked about it, et cetera, et cetera. Does anyone want to have a conversation about the one-ton highway truck, have them in to talk about it, or?
I think that, I thought the capital improvement explained that one pretty good.
You happy with all that?
Yeah.
I, I, you know.
We're good with these, we just gotta make a decision, do you want to do a veto when the time comes?
I've looked at it, I mean, there is nothing on there that's a want, it's all need, I mean, ultimately, I hear what you're saying, Bill, but I mean, I don't think that the capital improvement committee and the people that presented what they presented are, there's no fluff there, that, those are things we need, we're, you know, we are.
And a hundred state goes to eighty.
Eighty-two, is what he said, yep.
You know, we, we, we collectively, not just the Board of Selectmen, we have to be municipal planners.
Right, I agree, I agree.
For the viability of services of our town, so.
So, Denise, if we took the eighty-two, the eighty and the twenty and we, and we did it over five years.
Yes, so you're looking at about two-hundred-and-ten thousand, so forty, you know, it depends, um, it depends obviously what the interest rates would be, but you're probably looking at fifty thousand dollars a year.
Right.
I'd like to, uh, we look at the, that eighty-two, eighty-two, eighty-three, whatever it was, thousand, I think we can cut that down a little bit, that eighty-two thousand.
So, I can ask the chief if he'd like to bring in, um, he did say, he, I know, but, I did, he did say that he had a breakdown of what that cost is made up of, I can ask him to bring that on Monday if he'd like.
Yeah, and if he had competitive bids toward that, that would be good. Alright, so that's that.
Dan, did you have another question?
I have one question at the end here.
I was gonna ask, and again, it's, it's, it's cumbersome, and I appreciate you sending me the Excel spreadsheet, but I, 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 I'm a little busy this time of year myself, but is it possible if Cassandra or, or, uh, someone in your department could help us, uh, but I, I'd like to see a scenario where, let's just say, you had to take the Finance Committee's, uh, position, that you flatlined things, if you flatlined the budget and then you went up on the payroll, give the two percent to the non-contractual employees, uh, in fairness, and then you, um, uh, bumped up the, um, contractual employees, um, with the two percent, two and a half percent, where would the numbers fall?
I can do that, that's easy enough for me to do.
'Cause I think we're at a deflationary period, certainly energy costs a doubt, except that national grid at the high school and the, you know, but that's just, uh, seems like gouging by a big corporation, but anyways, uh, you know, um, you know, where would we end up? But I, I, we have, uh, a tax levy system that goes up like two and a half percent, so we, we have automatic tax increases built into what we're doing here, so I don't understand why we can't stay within that prop two and a half, which is still a tax escalation, no matter how you slice it, everybody in town's gonna get another two-hundred-dollar bill, uh, next year or more. I don't understand why we just can't budget replacement for, uh, dump trucks and radios, and why that wasn't built into some sort of matrix, you know? And, and we get hit with these, um, you know, they, they just, it shocks the system on just that we need another two-hundred grand, we need another ax. So, you know, I don't know why those radios weren't cycled through on a replacement basis, but.
The budgets we're talking about that are out of the two and a half?
Yep.
But, but.
Only like, what, three?
But, but our levy went up, what, how much money?
Three-hundred-and-twelve thousand.
Three-thirteen-two-oh-nine is the.
That would cover the school surcharge, wouldn't it?
No, the school came in at four-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars with the, with the decrease, oh, four-hundred, I'm sorry, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, I think, is their new number.
So, we're showing on the school.
So, just the school alone takes up all of that and then some.
And that's a wild card, you know, we've already talked about that.
And, and where do we stand on, um, like, excise taxes, I mean, is that a real, is that, you just don't know?
No, so excise tax, so if you look at the, I think it's the fourth spreadsheet that was attached.
You got a ton of them?
Um, so the actual.
You stop buying new trucks, Bill.
Oh, my gosh.
So, the way we handle those types of things, are those are.
I got a whole three.
Those are general fund revenues that we estimate, so if you look at the top page of the revenue spreadsheet that's attached to the, the budget, you'll see the actual that we took in for excise for fiscal fifteen is eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. We estimated for fiscal sixteen, eight-hundred-and-ten thousand, because you like to be conservative, obviously, on your revenues, because if you're, if you're over.
It's counting check-ins that haven't happened.
Exactly, so, so for fiscal seventeen, I think we can increase to a safe amount, which is eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand, we're not going up tremendously, it's two years after the eighty, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, um, so that's sort of a safe number, I really wouldn't want to go any higher on that. All of the general fund revenues, I increased slightly based on where we are now. But again, I don't like, I like, I'd rather be conservative, because then we have free cash if we're conservative and we balance our budget. So, for instance, the, um, cell tower rent, uh, we take in about thirty-three, thirty-five thousand dollars, we're estimating thirty-one, again, just to have that safe window. Um, on the breakdown of departmental receipts, it was done a little differently in the past, um, it was all lumped together, I split up all the categories so we can see where we stand. But they're not a lot, I mean, the Police Department takes in about twenty-five hundred dollars on their, um, accident reports. The Fire Department, twenty-five hundred dollars on their permit, so there's not a ton there. The Building Department licenses and permits, um, we've been taking in healthy amounts of licensing and permits for the building.
But the fees went up on that, so that should not be an offset.
So, we increased, yes, so I increased that estimate to sixty-five thousand, because again, if next year's a bad building year, then we're back down. So, all of them have been slight, again, slightly increased, we went from a hundred and ninety, what, sorry, one million, ninety thousand dollars was the estimates last year, I went to one million one-sixty-two, so it's up about seventy thousand dollars in general fund revenue, so that adds seventy thousand dollars of capacity in our revenue budget. On top of that, it's obviously the prop two and a half, which is three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. New growth is the extra assessments, if people are building and putting on additions. Again, we like to be conservative with that, because you never know where they're gonna be in the process, so we're estimating seventy-five thousand dollars of new growth. This year, we took in about a hundred and sixteen thousand, so we may have extra money coming in as the year goes on with that. Uh, the debt exclusion is an offset number, so it's in the debt exclusion we offset with the budget. And then state aid, state aid's going up, if the governor's budget passes, um, we will be from eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand in state aid up to nine-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. So, about forty-two thousand dollars of an increase in state aid.
But, but isn't that smoke and mirrors, because we, we, we gained it at the, uh, Groveland level, and we lost it at the regional school district, and we're, we're, we're swallowing that to the tune of thirty-nine percent of it, so. My, my calculation is when we went, we went backwards.
The only difference is we split the school loss and state aid with other, two other communities, we still take thirty-nine percent of it, but yes, we split it with them.
In terms of revenue, a, a, a planning board revenues in here fees?
So, planning board revenue, um, yes, so they're at about seventy-five hundred is what we're estimating.
So, we get seventy-five hundred, but we're gonna add a town planner for thirty-seven thousand? I, 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 I thought that would be on a par with the theory of the Building Department, which we debated previously, that it should kind of pay for itself in terms of, uh, you know, the department would be, um, paid with, uh, user fees and permanent fees, so why wouldn't the planning board, if they only generate seventy-five hundred in, uh, planning fees, why would we pay, you know, why would we go from eighty-seven hundred dollar budget to forty-six hundred and we get nothing in return for that?
Well, I think the Planning Department's a little different, because, um, a town planner would not just be for planning. It would, it, they would work with the Water and Sewer Department, the Highway Department, the Building Department, the Zoning Board. They would have to tremendously increase their fees to cover those costs, because, you know, one site plan and review may be six hundred, nine hundred dollars, whatever, but it takes four months to go through that process, so it's a different type of fee that you would really use, I don't know that you'd ever generate enough money in planning board fees to cover.
There's not a lot of development going on.
I'm a firm believer in, I'm a firm believer in.
And I'm for some development, but it doesn't seem to work in town.
The nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars we haven't paid out in legal, we wouldn't probably have half of that if we had a town planner.
I agree.
You would not, he'd be, he'd be on top of things and.
I don't agree, I don't agree with that at all.
Another thing a town planner would do, was a town planner, which could also come in, correct me if I'm wrong, if you wanted to have a business area and you wanted to try and go business, wouldn't that person try to help too a little bit?
Correct, so they would really look at the town as a whole, figure out, make sure all the zones are correct, where they, where the town wants them to be. You know, if we had a historic district downtown, then the planner would look at the historic district, district requirements, you may have like sign bylaws, things like that, that a planner would sort of facilitate. If a new development, if a new house was going in, the planner would look at the layout of the water and sewer lines and the, the utility poles, and really lay out that new house and how they're going to go on that street. So they really would work with multiple different departments.
I don't think a town planner would, would have saved us any of our legal costs over the last year from what I'm familiar with. I just, it's across the run of the town, I mean, there's always, there's always gonna be plaintiffs, they just, America never runs out of plaintiffs, they're just out there swimming around.
Yeah, I mean, I think they would.
It's just American culture.
I mean, I think they would streamline some processes, you know, working with site plan review and things like that. The benefit is you would have a professional person, point person to deal with those, instead of relying solely on the elected planning board.
And Bill, if you, if you've been around the county, I mean, they got a Brandon courthouse district, court in Salem, you know, they, they just, the courts at Bowman, the business is fantastic, you know, they never run out of.
Yeah, I'd just like a discussion on the proposed conservation agent also.
We just talked about the plan, the end of conservation, maybe that would be, that would be the same person.
So Mike Dempsey came to me last year and said that they would like to get some staff. He was going to propose adding a conservation agent. Over the course of the discussion, then the planning board, it had come up with this board, with other departments, that we really need a town planner, so the planning board submitted a planner. Because the planning board's requested person was over twenty hours a week, they would be obviously benefit eligible. So what a lot of communities have done is combine those two positions. So instead of hiring two people, one benefit eligible and one not, or both benefit eligible, you find someone that specializes in both of those fields and have probably seventy percent of their week spent on planning matters, thirty percent spent on conservation. So I did talk to both of those groups, and they would have been, they were supportive of that idea if it passes. So that's ultimately, it would be one person that we would like to have as both of those roles, so that you're not hiring two different people. And that's what was proposed.
What happened to the sharing of planner with, a part-time planner with another city of town?
So there's only one community around here that has a part-time planner, the rest of them have full-time planners.
Who was that?
I'm sorry?
Which town?
I think it's West Newbury.
I thought it was.
Yeah, so I did talk to, but I think part-time, I believe it's more than twenty hours, I think it's twenty-five hours over there. And that's fine, I mean, you certainly, I would say, personally, I do see that we need a planner, again, whether you agree or not in this budget climate, excuse me, and whether or not you start with someone eighteen hours a week, so they're not benefit eligible, but I do think there's a benefit to trying to get someone in to try and professionalize some of those components of the planning area.
Well, the, the building inspector seems to be working out, sharing them with, with Newbury. Maybe that's a thought that we could share with somebody on a planner slash conservation agent with another, with another town.
I don't know of any towns around that have a combined person, so I think you'd have to choose one or the other, because I don't know that they would be specialized. I think you'd have to obviously put a job posting out that tailors to both of those specialties. I can certainly reach out, like I said, I believe it was West Newbury, but I do believe they were more than part-time. I think they were like twenty-five hours.
Couldn't you hire a guy per, per diem, you know, I mean, it's gotta be somebody out there.
Can we do this? Can we see if we can get the chairman of the planning board and the chairman of the conservation board in before us and let them, let us hear their pitch on this?
Sure.
You guys agree with, agreeing with that?
That's, that's a very good idea, yeah.
And then we won't talk about this anymore until we hear from them?
Right.
Yeah, I can do that.
Let's see what they, let's see what they say and what they need and.
So I won't do it for Monday, just because, but I'll, so the next meeting that you're all at will be the twenty-eighth, that extra meeting that we're meeting, so I'll ask them to come in then.
Okay. All right. And Ed, did you, your piece out? You're good?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Dan, you were good?
I, I just had one quick question on the schools, the Northeast Vocational, you had two hundred and two hundred number year over year, have you heard from them at all?
I haven't, so with, so last year it was a hundred and twenty thousand. I'm requesting two hundred thousand right now.
That's what you requested.
So what I did do is I did reach out to Essex Tech. One of the issues with them is they're different than Whittier, they're different than Penn Tucket. We pretty much pay what they send us in September, once they do their enrollment, so we don't know how many students they're gonna have. One of the things I've mentioned to you guys before is, we currently have no seniors at Essex Tech. There will be no one that we're losing to attrition next year. We will only be adding additional students. The only benefit that we may have is there are six, they accepted six freshmen this year. We attrited three last year, they were hoping to only add three, and they added six. In your freshman year, you're all exploratory, there's no, you don't pick a major, I guess, until your sophomore year. Students can only go to Essex Tech for veterinary, farming, natural resource management, and I guess companion animal program. So if any of those six students does not choose one of those majors, they would not be able to stay at Essex Tech. So that may be the only saving grace, otherwise, any students that are added are at additional costs. So that two hundred number may be well below what we have to pay for them, but we don't know until October. So if we have extra capacity, we may want to put it there just as, just as a placeholder, or we wait and see. So this year, we were hit with an additional assessment, because they added the three additional students, that we will have to cover at a special town meeting in the annual with the transfer to cover that excess. But they're also a wild card. But I did, just so you're all aware, I did reach out to Essex Tech, I asked for all of the students who were attending, all of their addresses, and I checked them all with the town clerk to make sure they are, all are Groveland residents, and they are.
Ed, just a, just a POI. Spoke with Tracy this week, last week, and he, he had followed up on Dan McDonald's request that the Penn Tucket School Committee get put on our cable channel. Tracy also reached out to, to Whittier and, and.
Yeah.
What did I say?
She did the Penn Tucket.
Oh, okay. He also reached out to Whittier, the Whittier will be put into that, and then the question was, he wanted to know if we should go and try to get Essex Tech school committee, I, I didn't have a, I didn't have any information on that.
So the only difference is, we're not a voting member of Essex Tech, we're sort of there by default. So with Whittier, we are a voting community, but out of fourteen, we're in the minority, so Doug Jalinas, who's on our Penn Tucket School Committee, is the Whittier School Committee representative, but we do technically have a vote there. With Essex Tech, we have no voice at the table. It's completely up to you, we certainly can request them, it's public information, so it's up to you guys if you'd like to have their meetings, we certainly can do that.
I, I had no opinion.
This is just more information, the more programming we can get that impacts the people of Groveland. I, I think people ought to know what's going on, it's sixty-three percent of the budget, it impacts children, real estate values, you name it. There's a, there's a ripple effect in the, in the, what Dr. Malkman said, the big, what did he say, the big stone in the, in the pond?
I just don't want to attract more students that might not be aware of it.
It's right down the street from where I work, it's a brand new campus, I mean, it really looks like a college campus.
I mean, if you want it, I can, I can make a call and see if we can get them. It's up to you.
You guys want to have, have her make a call?
I, I have no opinion.
Make the call, what, to have a meeting and discuss it with each?
No, to, to try and get their meetings on our cable.
How many kids we got going there?
We have nine.
I, I, I think it's relevant, maybe it wouldn't be, you know, you know, you, you, you see Board of Selectmen running like, you know, three, four times a day, you know, maybe we can put the regional.
Make the call, it's not gonna hurt.
Board on there at two in the morning or something, but at least it's there if somebody wants to see it.
And put us on.
Up for more programming.
Okay.
You know, there's not enough channels on the, on the, on the television.
So the last piece.
You know what I'm saying? Two hundred channels and nothing to watch.
The last piece before we close is I would like to make sure that everybody watching, if anyone still watches early time, though.
Of course they are.
That we have plenty of seats open for, open seats for election. I don't have the list in front of me, I should have had it in front of me, we have selectmen.
Well, I, I haven't prepared for Monday, because Monday was a regular meeting, so I, I will go through.
Just to let them know, we do have seats.
Yes, so, I mean, I can tell you off the top of my head, no one has taken out papers for the Board of Assessors, the Board of Health, and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, and the Housing Authority. Those four, no one has taken out papers for. I will go through the list of what's available. Every other position right now, someone has taken papers out, they may not necessarily have returned them. The last day to take the papers out is Thursday, March tenth. The last day to return the papers is Monday, March fourteenth. So again, I'll go through a more detailed list on Monday, but.
Monday, I just wanted, a couple of different times talking about it to let people know.
And in addition, we need some volunteers for some of the town boards also.
Yes.
That's where I was, volunteers.
And maybe something on, on both, out on the, on the signboard out front.
We do, it does run out there, because it says to look at our website for the, we have it listed what's available. All of the, all of the vacancies on the committees are on our website.
All right, so I think that was good, I'm good.
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 I've got, I got an email relative to the, the, the place and fire.
All right, okay.
We set an agenda for a future meeting to get those guys in here.
All right, so can we talk about that email right now?
Well, there's technically no selectmen's time, because it's a special meeting, it's up, it's up to you, if you, I mean.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't.
Well, I think it's just gonna be discussion after maybe we close the meeting. Okay, so what we'll do is the meeting, it's, what's like eight, what is that?
Oh, three.
Eight oh three, we're gonna adjourn, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
I think that was the first quote of the night.
It was. And I have us go into the other room for executive session.
We do? We do. Lucky us. Good night, everyone.
So, you have a question, what Dan just talked about before you leave, Ed?
Yeah. Well, I would do it in the other room.
Okay.